No.
We're good.
Okay, we're good.
We're live.
Mike, come sit down, behave.
Tardy.
Yeah.
Even in the room, he's tardy.
Yeah.
Welcome, Tom, and we are now at the economic development portion of the budget, and that's going to be kind of a joint thing, I guess, between Mark and Tom, but Tom is prepared to...
Well, Commissioner, Tom actually has economic development, but also he falls under administration. So just so you understand, there's actually two parts to the budget.
So that's why I was saying there's a kind of a tag team going on there. But we will let Tom have a discussion with us on the economic development.
As Mark just introduced, the economic development expenses through the county are a portion of the administration budget, so just talking about the ED portion of that, obviously...
They're probably looking at the economic development fund?
Or the fund.
And then there's the administration. So which one do you guys want?
It doesn't make any difference, that's why I asked.
That's why she asked?
The administrative administration.
Is that out?
Is that behind it?
Okay.
Not that one.
Oh.
It's in this one?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
All right.
Orange tab.
There we go, all right.
So the ED portion of the administration budget, obviously, you know, in our economic development setup, we have one employee, so that obviously takes up the bulk of the budget under personnel services. The remaining expenses, the remaining total expenses come up to about $20,700. And if you look through those things, those are all, no particular line item is particularly large. Probably the biggest would be subscriptions, and that is our subscription to CoStar data analytics, which allows me to basically utilize a top-notch real estate database, as well as all sorts of analytics about who is doing what, not just within the county, but throughout the Kansas City area, identifying lease rates, leaseholders, lease expirations, if you will, so we can actually keep track and identify whose lease may be coming up that we need to reach out to to make sure that they're staying here or they're growing, or we can assist them in finding an alternate location. Not to mention just basic analytics regarding the economy as a whole and kind of where we've been over the past 12 months. Having all of these meetings on in the background of my office while I'm doing other things, I've noticed a common question of, you know, is there anything you can live without? So I've come prepared to talk about that as well. Even though my budget is relatively small compared to most of the other departments, those things that could potentially kind of go away would be office supplies and postage, both of which I can simply steal from Mark's office, given the opportunity.
Plus proximity.
Yes, plus proximity, which again doesn't amount to a whole lot. Also, the first line item can trash hole for $3,000. That really is, we're not obligated to any contracts at this point. That's really a just-in-case or what-if scenario in case we need to find outside bond counsel for a project or things along those lines. So those three are really line items that may not be touched at all, but they're in the budget, really as just-in-case items. The rest of them are pretty solid numbers, meetings and education, licenses and memberships. And again, that's really not a whole lot, as well as travel lumped in there. That's really three or four, perhaps, marketing trips or education trips on an annual basis, all of which I believe are beneficial and certainly worth the expense. But with that, I guess I'll answer any questions that you may have about any particular line item or questions in general.
Any questions?
Well, I just have one, this is not a question, but this is a concern when we get to the budget part of this, is we, all of the, I think we should conglomerate all of the trip amounts and people mileage amounts that they're putting together, and I think we should make a policy.
And what kind of, no, I'm just, what kind of policy? I'm just curious.
To establish maybe stricter limitations on that.
I think that that might be something that we need to look at, that we can.
What are you saying?
I've noted that there's a number of different mileage and travel expenses across these budgets, and they probably add up to a substantial amount, so we need to kind of look at what the policy is on that.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I don't see it on this one.
No, I'm not, I'm just addressing that.
It was just, I mean, we kind of had the...
It just was a light bulb that came on, you know.
Yeah, okay.
We can look at that, that's something to look at, but not on this one, but no. So we're going to move on to at this point?
And that's, don't take that wrong.
No, no, no.
Hey, Tom, it gets that way late in the day, it's not...
Haven't had my nap, ain't early in the morning.
Ain't early in the morning, ain't at lunchtime.
I've had my pizza.
Okay, so we're going to go on to the fund?
The Economic Development Fund.
Yes.
And really, the only thing that comes out of this is the, well, it's split into two portions. One goes to the administration portion, which we just covered. The other portion of it has historically gone to Leavenworth County Port Authority in the amount of $149,000 over the past few years annually. And that's kind of where we are at this point. I mean, I believe the Port Authority has submitted a request to you for this next budget year, and really, that proposed 2024 empty box needs to be filled for the next budget, so.
Commissioner, this is really a policy decision for you all. So what, in the past, what you decided was that the Port Authority would receive $149,000, the balance would go towards internal economic development. We've had discussions over this year after year after year after year. If you would like, I can invite them in to, I guess, provide more argument discussion on why they need $559,360 for 2024. They provided their narrative, or you can just give direction on how you'd like for us to continue to handle this fund. What we've tried to do the past couple of years is leave the mill levy flat in there, and whatever increase comes through natural growth, we start to set, I think, the conversation is we start to set that aside internally to build funds for the county to have, to come in and request assistance.
I believe I made that comment about having a portion of a mill or some other funding mechanism, other than just coming in and...
That was originally done, originally, they set aside...
That's what was done originally.
They set aside a mill for that.
Certain portion of a mill or whatever.
I think it's one.
It's just, you know, to get hit with that, that's, I think it's safe to say that's probably on the cap.
Commissioner Stevie?
Just a question for Tom.
Mm-hmm.
Did they formulate and work with you, together with you, to come up with this proposal for the Port Authority?
They, the Port Authority devised its own request. I was present during a meeting, but really did not have input into it personally.
So you did not have input into this?
No.
So I would think if they were requesting this amount, they would, this is a lot of money, I would think they would be here, and then maybe we need to reach out to them.
No, I don't want you to put that on them. I did not invite them.
Okay.
This budget was for, internally for staff, and that's why I just said, if you would like to discuss this directly with them, I can certainly set up an additional...
Well, I would think that before we, before we make that decision, we need to talk to them.
Well, the reason being that sometimes you look at this and you say, no, there's no way we're going to do that, like we've told some departments, and so therefore, there would be no point in that, that you're going to continue to fund them. If you think that them coming will make a difference in your decision, then we should definitely. If you read their narrative, at the end, the last bullet, it talks to you, $154,000 is for operating expenses, $405,000 is for program funds, and then they break out the program funds.
Building loan.
Yeah, so building loan program, marketing strategic plan of $100,000, job creation retention incentive fund. Those are all things that you could, you know, fund, but you have that information. If you would like to have them come in, I can certainly invite them in, but I just wanted to see if there was value to that.
Well, one, just for myself, I don't see us having the resources to be able to fund it at that level. Maybe the current level, close to the current level, but I also think we need to discuss whether we're going to place those funds under Tom, and then they can reach out to Tom for their consideration of projects and bring that to us through you. I mean, I think that's something to talk about.
That's funding at what level, $149,000?
Well, we haven't seen the rest of the budget, but that's dropped. That's, I don't think we'd have more.
You're just saying where the money goes, where the money's kept.
I don't know how you feel about it, but...
Well, I know how I feel about $559,000. Not warm and fuzzy. Especially not for a building loan program or...
Spec dollars.
...studying for a future business or, got to fill the ones up we got.
And we are having some success in Tonga Noxie, so we got to give it to everybody that's been involved in that.
Okay, let me rephrase it, return on investment, then.
Well, yeah.
ROI.
Okay, well, those are things that we can kind of mull over and...
Do we need to have like a whole, like, work session on it to make that decision? Or, I mean, do you want us to make that decision now? I mean, there's several issues there. There's, do we want it to be routed through Tom? Do we want to have it at the same level?
I'm going to tell you that historically, we spend more time talking about this fund than nearly every other fund, and it is such a small percentage of our budget. I think you set out a plan last year, actually, maybe the year before, I should say, and that that's probably the easiest way for me. I would just prefer that you continue to do it that way. If you want to spend an hour talking about a $300,000, $400,000 expenditure, I could invite those folks in, and you can do that. It's a policy decision. This one is truly not anything to do, it doesn't impact the operations of the county outside of the portion that we asked for funding the administration.
Mark, just throw this out there, I can't do this five minutes back, that made my heart go funny. Should there be some, maybe a percentage, maybe a 3% or 4%, if we're going to stay with it, to look at, give them, that towards them to help them run it, like everything costs more down the line, but not $559,360, I just can't support that.
That's why I was wanting it to be funded by something, a portion of a mill or something.
Tight.
We just walk away from it, and that's what the, that increases every year, that's the increase.
What's a quarter, what's a...
Tight to some kind of index.
Quarter mill's about $200,000? What's a quarter of a mill, Mark, $220?
Well, it'll be around $250.
$250 this year.
But typically, what we've been doing is leaving the levy flat. That's, that would be the intention, is to leave levy there flat. The money that comes in is what comes in. A portion goes, obviously, to the internal administration for our own economic development. A portion then go towards funding their requests. If you look at their request, they have $154,360 in operating expenses. I think what they're saying is that's the crucial portion of this request. That's what keeps the doors...
Right, which I think we should...
And so that's why, I mean, it's, they laid it out pretty clear. Now, they do have $777,000 in checking at the time they reported this. You know, it, again, it is a, these are truly funds that are not impacting operations.
Okay, so $154,360?
Which is less than we, what, we get $149,000? It's about basically level.
That's what, that's the percentage I'm talking about. I don't have any problem with $154,000, but I certainly can't do this anything much higher than that. And that's what they recommend. So why wouldn't we go with that, if we're going to go with anything? Just throwing it out there, folks.
So $154,360, and then balance of, you know, that mill levy generates would be the, for what the county keeps for our internal economic development.
And are we still saying we're going to route?
They can come in and request, but we're not going to necessarily...
Are we still going to route it to the Port Authority, which is our current practice? Or are we going to route it to Tom's?
Specifically, Port Authority.
I still, one thing I have an issue with myself, I know not everybody agrees with this, but I still think that the request to have a person on the executive board of LCDC if they're receiving county funds is not a, I don't think that's a unfair request.
Well, I think what I have an issue with is whether it's on the board or whether it's not, is that Tom would be in the know. I mean, so, you know, I know about confidentiality and things like that, but, you know, some of these things I think we could work together and fix ahead of time, if we knew what was coming down the road, instead of all of a sudden having to try to fix it afterwards. Good example.
You didn't mention a road.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, Doug. So that's why I'm saying, there's got to be something, if they don't want to put him on or put us on executive, we got, right now, we got chairperson handling that, but there should be some way to have Tom more involved, so we can help them, instead of getting blindsided and trying to fix their problem.
I will say that the past few months especially, LCDC has really leaned on me a little bit more for some support and participation on things, and really bringing me, in fact, Lisa and I worked on a prospect most of yesterday, as well as several days last week. So I think we are working together, maybe in a way that hasn't happened in the past.
And that's what I was asking for.
That's what I want.
And I think we're really kind of starting to see a real partnership, at least between...
Good, glad to hear that.
And I say between she and I, not to suggest there's any animosity with anybody else or anything like that, but, no, we have been working pretty close together.
Good, good. That's where, that's where I was going.
And even though we created, you know, when I first got here, that little column chart saying this is what we're going to do, this is what I'm going to do, Port Authority's going to do, we're intentionally blurring those lines at this point, just to help each other any way that we can, so it's...
As long as she can pick up the phone, or you can pick up the phone.
And 100%.
And y'all do that, I think that'll only help us.
Yeah, without a doubt.
So we don't get surprised.
Yeah, there's 100% comfort in she and I calling each other and asking for support and assistance.
Let's get a road built to the industrial park, we go.
Okay, well, are there questions?
I don't.
Do you have, do you understand kind of what we want? Okay, got that?
Yeah, I think that's pretty clear.
All right.
Appreciate that.
There's some clarity there, so we're there, and now we're going to start seeing what, I think we're finished with you, Tom, I believe. Thank you very much, sir.
As a former city administrator, I don't envy your position going through the budget and find what states...
Hey, you're exactly right.
There you go.
You just spoiled it, I thought this was fun.
Thank you.
No, Tom, I'll be honest with you, I better be up here than on down there as a city administrator trying to make, working the governing body through it.
Doing tricks.
Yeah, exactly.
And on the other...
What's the next?
I have one, there's a bunch left here, but there was a segue there that I wanted to take off.
All right, now let's head down to segue.
So in the past, we've talked about, and we're getting ready to talk about them again, outside agency funding and these groups that come in and talk and ask for funds that aren't part of our operations, like the Port Board. And the board had asked me to draft a policy to have some minimum requirements that they have to provide as part of those requests. And so I do have that policy drafted. I'm going to hand it out, and I don't expect you to take action on it, obviously. But I'd like for you to look for, look through it, provide me with any comments, and we'll get it on an agenda for approval. But I think it's timely also, because you have the historical societies that are getting ready to come in and ask for, they're already submitting their requests. I don't remember when we're having that on the agenda.
We didn't put it on.
Okay.
The deadline to submit them is Friday.
Okay, so they have till the end of this week to submit their request, and we'll be putting it on an agenda for the board to consider whether we want to or well, have we planned it. But, so I have this policy drafted, and there's a note on the back about some other things. I tried to pick up pretty much everything that has been discussed over the last year. So while it's in here, it doesn't mean that there was a full consensus, it just means somebody brought it up, and so I've included it, because it's easier to take it out than to remember what I forgot. Want to pass these around?
Makes sense.
Y'all can have these, and again, just provide me with feedback, and then I'll get this on an agenda for approval.
Okay.
And the segue for that would happen to be the executive, the discussion about the executive committee.
Stick together, thank you, ma'am. There you go, sir.
Yeah, I will leave you with that, and then we will go ahead and backfill the county commissioner's budget, since it was part of admin, you already talked about that part of it.
It was part of the other one?
Yeah, no.
Oh, here it is, here it is.
Okay, it's the 2024, I am ready, 2024 budget.
So I will just tell you that primarily discretionary funding spending here is our litigation. We budget for every year, and we hope that we never spend it. What that is, is when we have to engage an outside counsel for assistance on something, that's what the money is there. I can, or if we have to have a claim that's not covered by insurance, we also need a lot of that line up. I can tell you, in the last seven years, that's been anywhere from $450,000 to zero, which is what it is. So if you were looking for a line that I set would say that you could eliminate, and we wouldn't miss it, I would tell you that's it, $15,000.
Unless.
And hopefully, we wouldn't miss it.
Does that cover us?
Again, this is the county commission's budget, so I'm in here, and you all are in here.
Yeah.
Doug is in here, so...
So it covers us for anything Mike would do?
Probably not, it probably needs to be a little bit bigger.
Hey, I wasn't listening, now you're getting me back in the game here.
Again, typically, it would be engaging outside legal counsel on something.
I got you.
That's normally what it would be for.
I got you.
You have paid some claims out of that same line item on things that the insurance company did cover, so.
Understood.
That's what it's for. But again, if you all wanted to remove that, it wouldn't give me heartburn, it's just, I would hope that we wouldn't.
Does that cover the document?
Okay.
That's just, primarily, it's been outside legal counsel, or maybe one of the county commissioners has needed their own representation on a case, because they've been named individually or something like that, that's typically what's... But we, I have to say, since I have been here, I have known, I know one year where we used it to pay two clients that were not covered by insurance, and it was much more than $15,000.
It's probably safe to have it there, though.
I think so, just to, again, carrying on with the theme of what could be removed.
Sure, sure. I'm okay with that.
Any questions on the county?
Adam, Chair, I'm buying that.
Questions for budget? Now's time to cut it, Michael.
I am.
Then I'd like to go to courthouse general, coroner, and risk management. That's the easy one, the next easy one to do.
Coroner. Just have that one.
Okay.
So courthouse general is kind of a catch-all. We have things that are countywide expenditures, they don't fit into any one department, so they end up in the courthouse general. And really, if you look at the historical expenditures, there's probably a little room here. But again, because it is the catch-all, sometimes these line items will come in, we get like an unexpected bump on something. So if I was making a recommendation to you about an area where you want to be careful about eliminating anything, I'd be careful in this budget, simply because it's not in any one individual's budget. Nobody spends out of here.
Catch-all.
It is the, kind of the catch-all for, not a reserve, but kind of the catch-all for when things have come up in the middle of the year that we're not prepared for in the budget, so. I'd be happy to cover any individual line item, if you have questions on it, I'd like to get into it if I can.
That's not bad. We're giving them.
Hey, move on to coroner.
I have a question on the coroner before you go there. Is there, in researching this coroner issue, is there, some counties have their own...
Yep.
...coroner. The cost is starting to balloon. At what point does the, where's the point at which it becomes...
More efficient to have our own.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a good question, and one that we've actually discussed internally with staff. And I can tell you that even much larger counties than us do not have their own coroners, and there's a good reason why. Number one, they have to be a doctor. So we would have to hire a doctor, and I'm not, you know, we pay $280,000, we're budgeting for this. And so we would be trying to find a doctor that would be willing to come and work for the county for $280,000, but that would also include all their benefits, all of their...
Liability, yep.
A vehicle, an office, the, and by office, I guess...
Supports staff.
A room, a place to store the bodies and do all that. The cost would be, you know, with parks, it's $280,000. So we did do that, the conversation came up, we kind of just tabletopd it and came to the conclusion that if $280,000, we still can afford. If we could find somebody, we still couldn't afford to do that in the house for what we're paying for.
How many autopsies are we doing a year?
Think I'd be a very good doctor.
I could tell.
I heard a number right in front of me.
Sign it.
Yeah, it's pretty significant, and again, this is one that we're mandated to do.
Right. State unfunded mandate.
Would that make for an autopsy or not?
Mark, could that person double, is it like the county, like, we have to have a doctor that's like Dr. McBrackney right now?
Our health director.
Yeah, could you, could that person double up?
They have to.
I don't know, potentially, I'd have to look into that, but I still don't think that...
I don't think that person should want, that person has a practice, and most, most...
Our health director doesn't.
Have a private practice.
Well, I just wondered if there might be some resources from some other places.
And those people do, in their staff, they have...
We're in a position where even if we did that as well, we still wouldn't be at a point where we could do this for other things.
And they have a staff of people...
And also, keep in mind, maybe we'll, maybe our fortune will change, and fewer people will die in Leavenworth County, therefore, this expenditure won't be the full $280.
Will die unaccompanied.
However, if we buy, if we hire somebody, that expenditure is that expenditure. There is no flexibility, no safety.
No flexibility, got you.
You know, those are the deaths that we had, I mean, you know, they have to have them, you know?
Davis-Moeller did that for a number of years, early on. But then, once somebody got in looking into it, him as a funeral director wasn't what the statute required.
Right. Right.
Pathologist or whatever.
Yep.
So that's when the expense jumped.
Yep. You can have somebody that comes in and declares someone deceased, but then you have to have the autopsy done by a qualified...
And he ordered so few autopsies when he was there versus what's ever done now.
Well, but the statute, I mean, it's pretty clear... Well, but the statute, I mean, it's pretty clear. I mean, it's if you're, if you are not under the doctor's care with some type of an illness and it's unexplained or unexpected, you have to have an autopsy. It's not, it's not even if the family wants it or not. There's, it's not where the family can say, no, I don't want an autopsy.
It might be one, that might be a good reason for the state of Kansas to pay for.
Well, they should, but they don't. It's for us to pay for.
Well, maybe. Okay, so risk management would be the next one. And then really, this is where our safety committee gets their funds out.
Right.
So this is $10,000 from the.
Okay, what's the next one?
Any questions for Mark on the courthouse general, coroner, and risk management budget?
No.
Okay.
Do you anticipate that coroner continuing to explode?
Well, I think that we're going to continue, I mean, they're going to continue to increase their fees.
Yeah.
Their expenditures are going up just like ours are. They have to pay more for their staff like we do, the benefits are going up, so.
So at a certain point, you may find that.
There may be a point where the, where it would be justified to have our own personnel staff, but we don't think they're.
Thirty-eight percent so far for five months.
Oh, okay. Just a little, coming in a little under.
The fair building would be the next one.
Fair building, okay. 2024 budget for the fair building.
Again, these are the outside agency requests. Typically, I think they're all, except for we have maybe one new one. The rest of them are we, the ones we see year after year. Last year, you instructed us to send them all a letter to say, while you're getting funding this year, don't expect it going forward. We sent that letter. This is the request that they've submitted. I did not ask them to come in because past, typically funded them at a certain level. If any of these you would like to meet with one-on-one, I'd be more than happy to schedule a one-on-one meeting with the board. So I kind of wanted to go through them first to see if there was a need for some of these even before you went down that road.
I have a question about fair.
Go ahead.
Building stuff though. So we, they rent out the fair grounds?
Yes.
For events?
Auctions and then the buildings that are for events, or you can rent the building to use, the administration building.
Okay.
And your question is?
Is that jeopardized or tax exempt status?
Competing, government competing with private?
That too. Has anybody ever questioned that? You know, as far as.
You're just looking down on rental income?
Yeah, I mean, when we were looking at the cushion building, we have to lease that to medical type businesses to keep our exemption status. So that made me wonder about these other entities that we have renting out. Space for events. Seems to me that would conflict with our exempt status. So I'm thinking we need to quit doing that or.
It's their exempt status, isn't it, not ours? I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
It would be under.
No.
I mean, that's not.
You know what I mean though.
Right.
But it really isn't under our, not our monkey or circus, is it?
Yeah, the fair court is separate from county.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're elected to use it in our house, so.
Yeah, when I said we, I just meant very general. So should somebody look into that? Whether we should stop renting?
Well, they need to look into that. That's not our.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up because I see it here and it's something I've been thinking about.
I know, but I'm just trying to say, no, we have to kind of.
Yeah.
Let's let, I mean, you might, you might point out to them that they could be, but I'm sure that they could seek their own legal opinion on that, what their own.
Okay, because I mean, it's in here, so I think.
There's a statute that gives the authority for us to levy this, so we could probably look under that statute and read what, how they get, why they can get funding.
Okay.
I would think the private appraiser's office could tell you to answer any questions.
Okay.
I'll check with Bob.
Yeah, it's just something that, yeah, we just have to. We've got enough people that we have to.
Yeah. Not trying to make more work.
All right. Okay.
So then fair premium would be the next. Again, these requests come in pretty much spot on with what they were the year before. That's.
Is that for judges? Is that what they say? Or is that the same to?
Tracture six.
That's what they're talking about. Okay.
And they too have been told that they're not going to.
That last year, we sent a letter to all of them.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just making sure that they're all prepared to know that they may have to come up with their own.
Yeah. So that leads us to the extension council.
We're not charging any level of, or.
Utilities.
Getting any kind of compensation for.
So here's the, here's the part, and they will come in, they'll have to present their budget to you, their total budget, not just what they're requesting. They'll have to present that to you in the future, sometime in the next month, as required by the state statute. But what we found out last year is when we went through their budget is that we're like 95% of their budget.
Right.
K-State pays hardly any funding for this. They, they pick up a portion of the wages for their extension officers and some benefits. They provide some IT support, very, very limited. So if you charge them rent, if you charge, if we charge them, when we were moving them in, if you charge them for internet, if you charge them for electric, if you charge them for any of that kind of stuff.
Charge it yourself.
You charge it yourself because we're going to turn, we're going to have to turn around and get those funds from us. K-State does not contribute to that portion of it. So while they're called the K-State Extension Office, I think it's a misnomer in that they wear the purple shirts and K-State is their backdrop, you know, they help them.
Good promotion.
They, they help them with support and all that stuff, but they don't, and that's how they, that's how K-State says we're funding it. They give them all this support, all that other stuff. But really, at the local level, we fund their budget for the most part. So if you want to charge them rent, then you need to increase the contribution that you give them so they can pay it back to us. That's why it does not include.
I'm just in questioning the, I, I don't know, because I guess I haven't paid close enough attention, so, but I know that we have like the Council on Aging and some of our other organizations, nonprofits, including the Historical Society, CASA, that are doing fundraising. I mean, that are going out and actively trying to increase their financial capacity through fundraising. And I, I know that we have the fair and the 4H, you know, it's a fair time, but what other type of?
Like I say, I looked at the livestock buyers association, have a fair fundraiser and they raise some money. Huge amounts of money.
I'm just saying, are we getting, you know, organization, I don't want to see our organizations get complacent and not try to actively pursue.
This organization has its own board also, correct?
Yes.
They have a board, correct?
Is it typical throughout the entire state of Kansas, pretty much the counties are funding this?
Yes.
And they're, they're not getting private funds? That's very eighteen.
Well, I, I don't know that other agencies don't fund their fundraisers. I can just tell you that K-State participates at a very specific amount for every county.
Right.
And it's based on the number of agents. You can only get agents when you have a certain population or whatever. So it's a very specific calculation. The support they get from the state would be similar across all counties as a percentage. What the counties choose to contribute, I don't, I don't know that information. The counties, there's certain counties contribute more or less as part of their budget or if they go out and fund raises, I don't.
That's what we can ask them.
I only asked that because, I only asked because I know that Doug had gone to that one.
That was an impressive fundraiser, but.
And that's why I asked. It wasn't, it wasn't.
I will tell you, when I first got on the board, we responded this more than we were putting toward mental health.
Yeah, that was, yeah, less than, less than eight years ago, actually.
We were giving more money to this than mental health.
And on page seven of their presentation, they break out like a value for outside contributions as far as like labor that they get, contributions, stuff like that on page seven.
And there's also this page that we have to sign off on later. It's in the back of the budget there.
That's their actual budget.
Yeah, that shows K-State University gives $47,164 in unencumbered cash, is $19,000.
I just think it would help if they would.
I think that's actually.
Oh, maybe not.
That's the one that'll have to come first.
That's the one that we have to sign back, sign in, yeah, okay.
So they will be coming in, just so you know, they have to come in in the budget form that Linda was just referencing. They have, we, you all have votes, we're going to have the chairperson.
Just circling back to this policy, this, you, this policy included a requirement that they bank within Lowland County, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which line is that?
I read that first thing.
Yeah, that's what I.
I think it was right.
Yeah, I think that's an important.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I saw it, but I can't, I'm missing it now.
Right here on the second dollar there.
Okay, yeah, there we go, there we go. Yeah, that's, I mean, I think that's important that they bank in the county.
Okay, so any questions on this one then? Or are you just?
We're just waiting for the question.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm wanting me to give them any heads up before they come in. Next one, soil conservation. Last year, when you sent them the letter, they actually reduced their request by $20,000. Typically, they've been asking for 45, so you do see that it went back up to 45 for 2024, but that was because they reduced it for this year after we sent the letter out.
We didn't send out a letter.
Yeah.
Now, is this something under state statute that we have to fund?
Soil conservation?
Yes.
I don't know.
Is that a mandate?
I'm, I can't answer that.
Because we need to find out.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to know that for certain, whether it is or is not. I mean, just for future.
Yep.
Future reference.
Yeah, we need to know that.
Obviously, they have some discretion on how much they ask for because they reduced it last year or so. I will find that out.
After they closed their office here in Lowland County and moved it all to Jefferson County, their expenses dropped a lot.
Yeah, and the first year it didn't, and then we said, hey, the whole idea of you consolidating all of your expenses was eliminated. We did reduce it and the last year they reduced it. I'll find out. Is that one that you want to come in and meet with you or?
If, unless, if it's, if it's, if we're, it's under state mandate, if we're mandated, I think.
Yeah, we have to fund it.
Better than not, I don't think why they would have to meet with them. We've already wasted it.
But otherwise, no, because I think that, you know, we've given notice and is this one that they, you know?
Yep.
So then we can kind of decide where we want to go from there in the future. But at this point in time, we've given notice to all of these organizations, correct? Not to expect.
Year in advance.
Right, so I think that it's, unless there's something that we didn't know, you know, we have, if we have state mandated funding, that's different than when it's.
I agree.
CASA, their request is the same as it's been for several years.
Okay.
Does CASA have a board of directors or how does?
Yes.
How does that work?
I said on their board.
Is it appointed by the city, the county?
No, that is a, they're a 501(c)(3). They find their own board of directors.
Oh, they appoint their own board.
They appoint their own board of directors and chair right now is Ted Davis.
Any questions on CASA?
No.
Next would be Alliance Against Family Violence. Again, if you look at their budget, they reduced their budget last year after we sent the letter and they moved it up slightly this year. They have a pretty extensive narrative on what they're, what they do in their full budget, their financials, they have an audit report, so I think they have pretty much any information that you would want is probably in the presentation.
This is one of those areas, and I think, I don't know what the other commissioners think, but this is one of those areas that I really think we got to take care of with what's going on, because these people have nowhere to turn. I have no chance to read the entire thing, but, you know, I'm supportive of Alliance Against Family Violence myself, maybe because I've had to deal with, for 21 years, with some of the things that came across, but maybe I'm a little one-sided on it.
Wasn't this one that if they don't get our funding, that it tends to be that they don't continue? They closed down for a couple of years.
Yeah.
They had to raise money.
But I think that there's several that we've had that have been in those situations and so on. But that is correct, they did close down, but, and that was unfortunate, to say the least.
We didn't find out till.
I said.
That's too late.
I guess what I'm saying is I, I don't have a problem with what they're asking for, considering what they do. Once you, if you work in that field and once they close down, you realize you've got a problem.
But those are, but those are some of the questions and some of the things that we need to look at for the future if we're saying we're no longer going to fund these non.
Outside agencies.
These outside agencies, that the consequence of doing that, so we need to look carefully and evaluate how we're going to make those decisions. If that's what we, the direction we're going in, is my point is.
Obviously, they're not part of our core service.
Right.
Core services are the departments within the county. So when you are looking at making tough decisions on budgets being cut in our core services area, it's hard to not take the same harsh look or hard look at the outside agencies. We've said before, there's a, there's nearly an unlimited number of agencies in the county that do great things that are totally justified in spending and if we could fund them, we would, but that's not our core service area.
Yeah, Mark, I believe one difference, my opinion only. These are saving people from getting hurt.
But so does CASA?
Yeah, and I'm not saying so.
No, I'm saying, I'm, no, but when we're going through.
And there are a lot of organizations.
If CASA were to ask for more, I would probably look at it.
No, I'm just.
I'm looking at the ones, this is not an American Legion thing, this is not.
Right.
Something like this. This is where people need help. And when you spend tax dollars, why not give it to people that need help?
No, I, I can, I'm 100%.
I think we're going to have to take that.
No, I'm involved.
I think we're going to have to come to a conclusion on X amount is what we're going to dedicate to the outside agencies and then decide to prioritize within that amount.
Exactly, and that's kind of where I was, where I was getting is that, you know, we've been, we've, we've given this information and the, and the letters to these organizations. But I think as a, as a board of county commissioners, we need to decide, is that actually what we want to do or do we want to come up with, this is the amount of money we are willing to have set aside in our budget to fund?
Everybody or whatever.
These, no, these.
I mean divided.
Right. But however it is.
Well, not necessarily each.
Or if we want to say, or we don't consider this to be a priority. So once we have funded here, if we have anything left over, it's kind of like that thing start at the top and then move down. If anything's left over, then we'll, we'll fund it, otherwise we're done.
True.
I don't know, right. But I just was saying, I think that that's something that we need to look at and make a decision about here in the next couple of weeks.
And I think we need to think, you know, whatever, if it's a, I don't know, I talked to Mark, was it around 368,000, there's a. to Mark, was it around three hundred and sixty-eight thou, there's, whatever the total is, take that, and I think we're gonna have to make that a reduced level, and then make the priority decision.
No, I was just finding, I was just saying that, well, that's something we need to do, because the direction we gave staff was to say, no more, we're done funding.
And at least they were noted, everybody was notified, but, but that doesn't mean we have.
Is that, my question was, is that really where we want to go, or are we saying we want to do something that is.
I think if possible, we need to see the whole budget, you know, it's, we're just early in the process.
Absolutely, but not that early in the process, because Mark says he wants the fifth.
He wants it.
So.
You're gonna be gone, I'm gonna be gone, I mean.
I'll be back in a minute.
No, I'm saying time-wise, if there's a week or two.
Um, I do think we should consider that, but I think we need to come up with a number that, that we're willing, I mean.
For the future, so we do have time on that. We do have time.
I think it's gonna come up here in about twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes. I think it's gonna come up.
Who?
I think that, I think that that conversation is gonna come up quicker than you think.
Oh.
Oh, boy.
Ow.
There you go, Vicki.
And, and you'll, you'll see why in a minute. So Guidance Center, Riverside Resource, or no, I'm sorry, Guidance Center is next. Their request last year was a plat request. Going into this year, they've asked for enhancement. Fund, when you look at the Crisis Stabilization Center, they're allowing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a, in kind, I guess. I think Commissioner Smith brought it up earlier, that we used to fund this at a level below what we were funding.
Extension.
Extension, and I know in the last year, we've all talked about that Kansas is last in the nation in spending on mental health, so the Guidance Center provides community mental health services for the county. It is a contracted service. This is not like they're asking us for money that they don't provide service for. We are obligated statutorily to provide a community mental health center. It doesn't have to be the Guidance Center, but we've had very good success with them. Obviously, we've recommended continuing that agreement with them throughout twenty twenty-three, and wouldn't seem to agree to why we wouldn't do that.
And can I interject something, because I meant to bring it up in the meeting, and now we're still in the public meeting, that they have, they have, we've kind of, yesterday, and I didn't make it, wound down and stopped the task force because it kind of met its, achieved the goals of the task force. However, the Guidance Center requested that the same members of the task force be part of a newly formed advisory board for mental health for the Guidance Center that is helping them to remain in compliance with the SAMCHAG grant and with the, the new, being able to be a health services for mental health and all those things within the, they have asked for the Board of County Commissioners to designate someone to, and that was kind of going back to the nonprofits having an executive, asking to have a member of the Board of County Commissioners sit on the, that advisory board. And so, you know, we need to probably make a decision here in the next several weeks as to which county commissioner would like to have that role, and then in the future, we need to kind of have a commitment that's, one of the county commissioners will or should accept that, and if none of them want to, then to find someone who we want to have represent us on that, because I think.
I think one of the county commissioners said on that.
Right, I'm just saying, I think that that's something that we want to.
Yeah, I agree.
To do, because we've been asked.
Yep.
So, but that's been, if, so.
Think about it.
Something to think about. There we go.
Okay, Riverside Resources. Riverside Resource has notified the agencies that when they received the letter last year, they submitted a new budget request reducing their budget, and this year they've asked to bring that funding back up to their previous funding levels.
Any comments, questions?
Because when it's a hundred thousand dollar request, it's, I think, when we really get boiled, we need to have the discussion, but when we boil it down and just get it down to like, okay, we have three hundred thousand total to give out, you know, now we're getting, now your request's gonna be a little different.
That's true, but right now, we're trying to look at what are for this.
We know our magic number.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
How much we got.
Mark, what are you telling us?
Well, I have a little different philosophy on that, and that is, it doesn't matter if we have the abundance of funds or not, it's whether the service is justified. So you start there, and if it's justified and it's needed, you need to find a way to fund it, even though we have limited resources. Once we run out of resources, but if it makes sense, it makes sense, if it doesn't, it doesn't, so what I'd like for you to say is, if you, if, identify the low end for fruit, right?
Right.
So if you kick this back to me and say, Mark, balance the budget, I don't want to go in and cut something that is near and dear to your hearts. I want you to say, if there's an area, this is one that's available, so you go look at this, so that's why.
Well, I mean, I, I think we all agree, I mean.
Yeah, that's why I said, we all agree.
I'm sure they need to be funding things that benefit the whole county in this one area.
And these special needs kids need the help, you know, obviously, but, but it's gonna, but that gets back to our earlier conversation. Yes, we all agree, but, but we're gonna fund at a lower level, so how do you balance that out?
So then, do we need to look at, I mean, and I, and I, because it's hard for me, too. I used to work there. You know, do we want to say, well, you know, we'll stay at what we funded you last year, but we're not going to give you the increase that you've requested? That's a, that's a way of trimming off what is the requested overall that we've had budget downs with any of these?
We kind of gotta know what the big, what the pie is.
Right, but not knowing what the pie is, making decisions, to me, we need to make decisions.
Or cake.
Are you gonna get?
Cake pie.
Yeah, they're strawberries, yeah.
Are you gonna get a graham crackers, or are you gonna get a cheesecake?
No, she was talking about my lunchtime, Mark, that we wanted to have.
Well, who's a hobler?
Well, it's approved in this year's budget between all those funds, it's nine hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, which is why I said, do we want, that's why I said, are we, we need to talk first about, we have people that have asked for increases, even within this. Should we say, no, we're not gonna grant an increase? We will give you this time, this one last time, until we decide what we absolutely want to do in the future, we will fund you at the level you were at last year, or at this, you know, we will fund you at that level, but we're not going to give you an enhancement or more than what we gave you last year, because we're trying to work toward reducing.
I think we need to cut it down to a certain amount, whatever everybody agrees, get it cut down.
And then I'm saying, that's for all of these that have asked for increases.
I think some of the agencies are probably not part of that, though.
Well, I'm in, like, three hundred thousand, Mark, then we decide.
While it's an outside organization, it's prioritized.
Right.
I mean, it's.
Right, no, I'm, I'm, I know that there, I'm differentiating there, but I'm not for the, I'm just saying for all of our other, you know, when.
It shouldn't go any higher, nothing else.
No increases is what I'm saying.
If they get in twenty twenty-three is what we start with in twenty twenty-four.
That's, and then we'll see.
That's a starting point.
Right, then we'll see if we have.
Yeah, I agree with that.
No, then we'll see what we have or what we don't have, or what we do or don't want to do, but our starting point right now should be, I think, should be to say that we're not going to give increases. We will give what we funded at.
Like that's where we're at. So St. Vincent's Clinic would be the next one, and again, from twenty to forty, they're asking for an extra twenty thousand dollars from one year to the next, because they reduced it last year. I kind of have a little bit different, maybe, opinion on this one, in that, because I know more about the organization, I guess, than I did before. This is a very large organization. It's not just a local, very large organization, nationwide, so we aren't contributing locally to a clinic, but if you're looking for areas where an organization like an Alliance Against Family Violence, or CASA, or someone like that who's providing services locally, versus something like this, I just think that it's only twenty thousand dollars left in this year, and forty thousand the next, I realize it's not a big deal, but they're a very large organization with very, a lot of resources that these smaller CASAs and the Alliance, who are local organizations, do not have.
I agree with that.
I do, too.
Putting that up. Uh, so that brings us to the Sparrow Women's Clinic, and this is why I said in about fifteen to twenty minutes, you're gonna have that conversation, because this is a new request. So if you say that we have a, this is the pool, and we're gonna divide the pool, it's, it gets substantially smaller for everybody else when you allow somebody new into the group which you put that cap, and that's why I think you need to have that conversation.
Well, and I'll just say for one, I am a hundred percent in favor of what this organization does, which is to help these young ladies that are in crisis pregnancy situations and help them to, help them to give them the resources to keep their babies, and I think it's a good organization, and I think it should be part, I, I don't think there's any way we can fund it anywhere close to what they're requesting, but I do, I do think it merits.
But do you think, do they do fundraising through local churches?
I think they are, I think they are.
They should be, it should be.
Yeah, I, I think they are, but I, I think, five thousand, ten thou, I mean, they, I, I think to show, I, I think it's a, a great.
I tend to agree with you, but what we gotta look at is, we all have things that touch our heart, or are important to each one of us on this, and, and I think, bringing this on, I'm not against it, I still don't want to see us going over anything that we may need to, we needed, we may decide to do earlier, but I'm not, I don't have a problem with looking at something for the funding. I don't think this is realistic for us, but I, I think everybody has something, like Mark just mentioned, the one he looked into, we all have something. Vicki's got things that she's worked on, I've done, everybody that's tabled, so we have to make a decision that we're just gonna keep at a certain level and go no higher.
And even if the commissioners.
Or even like do it.
We gave five thousand towards us, I'm sure we'd be willing to go to a fundraiser and help them with the fundraiser, that kind of thing.
We, we do that, we've, 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 I don't know about everyone else, but we have kind of stood up and, and done stuff for people that have come to us, and.
I have to.
When I let her do that, it's force somebody to donate.
Right.
Because that's what we're doing, is force the taxpayer to donate.
Anything in here that shows their additional funding that they get money with.
Um, I think that what they're talking about is they need a hundred and eight thousand. They've shown their expenses.
I don't think they, they show where they get their other revenue from.
And then they're asking us to contribute seventy-five thousand of the one oh eight to the twenty twenty-four. But obviously, it's not gonna be seventy-five thousand. Is there a threshold that you would like to plug in the budget?
I would just like you to plug them in at a small amount.
Five, ten?
I'll do that.
First time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five.
I don't care, I mean, I.
I mean, I think that every little bit helps when you're.
And then we just, then if, if, after we have decided how we want to go about and where we want to, because then we can all agree to, you know, sit down and hammer through some stuff and, and say, okay, here's where we are. I just.
I think we're really gonna have to talk about what that total amount is.
Right, exactly.
You think?
We've got to fund our core services that we have to provide.
Right, because we have to make sure we have our roads, we have to make sure.
We have roads, we have to log for.
Right, there's things that we have had, and there's, and we need the mental health, because that's a state, although it's funded, it's not funded, but it is something that we have to do, and when we hit the we have to's and take care of them, then what we have left, then we can decide what we want to do. You know, I think there's also an option at some point, we didn't do it, but we could change up a little bit of what we were gonna do with when we asked about the mental health, putting something on a ballot. Instead of having it just mental health, we might want to consider and think about, do we want to put it to the voters to decide, do you want to pay for?
Social services.
Social services that are outside of our core, I mean, and let the voters decide.
It is one mill.
Yeah, if you want to.
I'm assuming.
Do a mill, I'm just.
The voters would say no.
Well, but.
Then they have spoken.
Then they have spoken. I mean, no, I'm saying.
I don't, I, do you want to donate to these organizations? More power to you, but I just have a problem, us telling the public they are gonna donate through their tax dollars.
Yeah, and, and that's a really good point, and I, I do think us reducing it significantly gives Mark leeway on his budget as well.
Well, I'd still like to see, I don't know if that's what we were going direction.
No, I'm not, that's not the direction. I, I'm, I think that sometimes you just have to twist somebody's arm and say, yeah, you're gonna help.
Well, what I was, what I was gonna talk about was asking Mark now, that he's seen a lot of the consensus, or at least direction, to take a look at the budget. I mean, he's sitting them with him every day and bring back some of his recommendations, also as our, as our county administrator.
Getting ready to have the general discussion?
Yes.
Okay, that would, yeah, we've got a few more minutes.
To wrap up.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up at three?
I hope so.
Between three and five. Thank you, ma'am.
So, Commissioners, you've now met with each department, or representative of each department is coming in to present their budget. It sounds like from the outside agencies, you would like to, we have to meet with the extension office, that means we have to approve their budget independently. Are there any of the other outside agencies besides the extension office, potentially, that you would like to call in and have a one-on-one?
I'd just like to know, we are obligated to fund soil conservation.
Assuming that we are, do you want to meet with them? If we don't, if we're not required to fund them, do you want to meet with them?
What's, what's our bail, sir?
I want to meet with them if they, if we have to, then we're, yeah.
Well, for conservation, I don't think we have to meet with them, we don't have to approve their budget, but the question is, do you want to meet with them to discuss whether you can, they get twenty thousand or forty thousand, or you just want to make a decision on that?
I think that, well, if we don't have to fund them, I just think that we need to, like I said, whatever they, we had at twenty twenty-three budget is what we need to allow for, for anybody, for all of those, these requests, whatever they were at, that's my opinion.
So with that, then there really wouldn't be a necessity to meet with them.
But I would like to meet with them, because then if we do have to fund them, I want to find out why, you know, what is their justification for the change, I mean.
Well, we don't have to approve the, what, the amount they requested, I can say that right now, because we've reduced it in the past.
Okay.
So I, I know that, that's not like, they don't get to tell us how much money we give them, but it's kind of an ask, so.
Okay.
We, we, I know that.
Right, oh, I understand, okay, I'm just. I don't know what everybody else wants to.
We've seen a lot of enhancements on things that we have to provide.
Right.
So we gotta figure out something.
Okay, so last year, when we were getting towards the end of the year, and we were talking about what inflation was doing, and I said, it's not twenty twenty-two that I'm worried about, really, twenty twenty-three is gonna be a booger, but twenty twenty-four is where we're gonna see the impact.
I remember.
And what I meant by that was, we didn't carry over the amount of cash into twenty twenty-three that we normally would have.
Right.
Right.
We spent, it's like public works, or roadworks, that's a good example. We were within like ten percent on their budget. Normally, we would carry more over.
Right.
Where that hurts us is, when we have carryover, you don't spend it in the next year, so the money carried over in twenty twenty-two doesn't help us in twenty twenty-three, it helps us in twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Because then we can budget that to help lower the mill.
Right.
Well, our cash carryovers weren't what they normally would be because of inflation last year, so going into twenty twenty-four, why do you will see a bigger impact on the mill levies, because we don't have the cash. we don't have the cash carryovers that we normally have?
Bring it down.
So when you're looking at expenditures, they don't match up with the, with what the mill levy normally would do. Our expenditures maybe are only up overall, let's say 10%, which falls within what our ad lorum valuation would be. But our cash carryover is down 50% compared to what we normally would carry over in some of these funds. So then we don't have that to offset it, which means the levy has to go up. That's the way it works. Now, I know that the Commission is probably not going to be really in favor of increasing the mill levy, but I'm telling you, to get this mill levy flat is going to be a work, a lot of work. And I watched the meetings today and I can tell you, everybody who came in here and presented their budget did a great job of justifying why they need what they asked for. But I'm also telling you that there is no way you can fund these departments at the level they requested today and get a flat mill levy. Not possible. It is simply not possible. So you can direct me to work with departments and get back to a flat mill levy, and I will do that and bring you back a flat mill levy. Or I can have them come back in and you can have the really difficult conversations with them about what has to be done to get to a flat mill levy, or you can increase the mill levy.
Mark, I've, I've always felt that that was the administrator's job, whether it's a county or city, when after the discussion is to go back in for you to sit down with them and try, and try to do that. I don't know if it worked good. I'm sure we'd all, because we've got different opinions on cuts, we need somebody to go in and say, okay, meet one-on-one, say, this is what we're looking at, and then bring it back to us. That's just the way I look at it.
That's why I thought we were looking hard at the outside agencies.
Yeah.
Even if I completely, if I completely eliminated all the outside agencies, I could not get a.
I understand that.
I understand that.
That gives you something to work with, though.
But it's still going to be.
I mean, if I zeroed it out.
Oh, yeah.
So, so I'm just saying, and I realize that's not what we're looking at here either. I'm not, I wouldn't come back and suggest that to you. I'm just telling you, between now and July 5th, there have to be some pretty good negotiations going on within these departments to get this back to a flat mill levy. And I think we can do it. I mean, if that's your direction, I know we'll do it, but.
So one comment.
Yeah.
The way some of my constituents view it, our taxes went up, our valuations went up 14.2%. And therefore, you county, and I haven't heard how much our revenues are total as far as increase year over year, therefore, you county should have higher revenues in the tune to four, $5 million. So you should be able to work with that. That's, that's what a lot of folks are looking at. I understand costs have gone, I mean, we could go through the whole rendition of the costs have gone up, the fuel has gone up, the roads have gone up, the bridges have gone up, but I just want to say that's, that's what some people are saying.
Without a doubt, ad lorum taxes with a flat mill levy will still generate more tax dollars this year than we did in previous years. It will generate more ad lorum tax dollars, probably around 12%, not 40%. But that's, ad lorum taxes is probably what, that's absolutely true. Cost of doing business went up as well. You said it doesn't matter, it's still an increase in taxes, which what you're talking about is if we go revenue neutral. If, if you want to go revenue neutral and you give me that direction, I, I'll do it because that's my job and we'll get there. But I'm telling you, we will be laying off people. We will be shutting some departments completely down to get there. That's just what has to happen. I'm not, I'm not trying to be like sensationalizing it to, I'm just saying that's the facts. If you want to continue, and again, every department came in here, there may have been a few hundred thousand in total today. I don't think we identified $500,000 in areas that where we could cut it. So there, there has to be a lot, and that's why I'm looking for a direction from the board. We met with them, talked to them, they all did a really good job of justifying what they're requesting, but it's just not feasible to get there if you don't want to. If you want to keep a flat mill levy, we can't fund the budgets that were presented today. It's just not feasible, so.
Well, I don't want to increase it. I don't want to increase it.
Oh, no, no.
Down. And I didn't think that you would. And, and I understand that that represents, and also keep in mind, that's not all of our revenue. So while ad lorum taxes went up, not all of our revenue went up, and most of it did not go up 10%. So it's a portion of our revenue went up. We still have other revenue districts that went down, like you know, you saw in the registered deeds, $500,000 revenue loss right there in Portland. So that, that is part of our revenue, too. Ad lorum taxes, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's around 70, 65, 70% of total revenue.
And just remember if they can reach our ad lorum relief.
It went up 10%, but really only.
Just think about it.
Unless it's 14%, it really only represents around a 7% increase in our revenue. And it doesn't, that doesn't take into consideration what came down, like the 500,000 from the registered deeds that's reduced.
Well, would you rather do it or would you rather them come in front of us? Because I think we could suggest some ideas to.
Well, I would like, I would like for you to give me your suggestions.
I want you to make.
If you have them right now, then I will definitely take them into consideration. But I think to get to where you need to be, I'm not discrediting you with this board is capable of, but I think to get to where you need to be by July 5th.
You need to do it.
You need to meet with these departments.
I agree.
Thank you, Ron.
I absolutely agree.
And I agree with Commissioner Mike Smith. It is my job. I'm more than happy to do it. Sometimes I have to be the bad guy and, and that's part of it.
And you've done the job very well the last several years, yeah.
When do you need their, our recommendations?
Well, as soon as possible. I mean, as soon as possible. I, I.
Kind of take it home and think about it.
Yeah, I'm going to start working with the departments probably next week sometime to go through some things. If you have recommendations, it might be best to bring them back next Wednesday if you have them. I'd tell you that. That way we can talk about them in the open meeting.
I'll have them in the morning.
Or if you want to, if you want to just drop them off to me directly, I can, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, and I know there's probably different philosophies on how you guys want this budget to end up. Me personally, just so you know, I don't use the mill levy. To me, it's just a formula. What I look at is CPI and our total dollar amount for the overall budget, period. I don't, I don't care what the mill levy is going to be or got to be or could be. If our total budget only goes up about the same amount as a CPI, I think we've done our job. That's how I feel personally. If we can get under that, even better.
We'll see where, we'll see how that shakes out.
And, and that's, exactly. That's what I look at, and then whatever the mill is, it is. But to me, if the cost of living has gone up, we're not adding, and you heard it over and over and over, we're not adding any services, we're not adding any new people, we're not adding anything.
Actually, you had a reduction in the vehicles.
Yeah, if anything, we've had a reduction. But basically, keeping the same services and assets we had last year for next year, that should only go up about the CPI's percentage, period. The mill levy is what it is. That's how I look at it. So if, if Mark brings us back a budget and says, hey, this CPI is 6% and our overall county budget went up 6%, I don't care what the mill levy is. That's a good figure. We've done our job. We've basically kept in check inflation and providing the services and turning the taxpayers' money into assets and services for them. That's all we are. We're 100% service-related industry. All we're doing is taking their tax dollars and giving them back to them in the things that they need us to do. However we can do that, as economically as possible, is what we're supposed to do. And the CPI is however much weight you want to put on that, if you think it's 100% accurate, no, I don't. But it's about all you've got to use. You've got to use something, and that's about all you have to use. And it pretty much represents, if, if you're in line with CPI, magically, you've done your job. I mean, if it was 100% accurate, then you've absolutely done your job.
Well, the Constitutional Amendment 1611 caps it at 4%. So that's kind of what the target has been, the 4%. So that's kind of what I'm thinking, is target that 4% even though.
It caps the valuation.
That, that CPI is going to go up and down. I don't know. The CPI might be 10% this year. I don't know. It's, but.
They said it was what it did last year. I think it was more like 18.
But we can't, we can't raise the spending by that level.
But that was a compromise and that was on the valuation, so.
And that's what I'm saying.[1728.11]